Chambers, I'm always excited about that and I saw so many cars outside, I wasn't sure if I was missing something on the agenda. So it's good to see you all here. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and I am gonna ask city manager if he can please take role.
Mayor Arizmendi.
President.
Mayor Protem Delmar.
Here.
Councilmember Capocha.
Here.
Councilmember Goss.
Here.
Councilmember Harabedian.
Here.
We have a floor man can continue, mayor.
Great, thank you. And if everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and we can all be seated. I do not have an invocation tonight. So I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda, and I know that we are having to poll one of our items due to notification. So our public hearing will be pulled from this agenda. Is there anything else on the agenda that needs to be addressed?
Not for me, but that change I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that motion carries unanimously. The next item is the approval of the minutes, and those are from February thirteenth. Do you have any questions on the minutes? Comments?
Not good, was it?
Yeah, me too.
Okay, I'll move we approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. That motion also carries unanimously. The next item we have in our agenda is mayor and city council reports. Who would like to begin?
I have nothing to report.
What? Councilmember Capocha, you always do. Okay?
I have nothing.
Okay, just a brief report. I wanted to congratulate the Friends of the Library for another excellent wine tasting.
Yes.
At Alverna, what's a week and a half ago, and specifically Leslie Ziff, who I understand ran it this year and ran it with a broken leg, no less.
Yes.
I don't know if they set all-time attendance records, but it was just an amazing event, just packed. So great job to everyone involved. Also, I got a chance with the mayor to go to Little League Opening Day this past Saturday, and it's actually my eleventh straight Little League Opening Day. I just can't get enough of the place.
My second.
And it was just a ball, just a, it's just a ball. And thank you to Mr. Taylor again for helping out there at the beginning of the parade, as he always does. And I'm on a liaison to the Community Services Commission and just had a meeting last night, and they had a pretty good crowd. And one of the issues that was discussed was the arts in public places and what we're gonna do with Kirsten Court. And they decided to form a subcommittee to kinda put a little more time into researching it and discussing it. So when I know more about that, I'll bring it back to council. And one other item on Taylor's Meats. My wife has been bugging me to go in and see Taylor's Meats for several weeks now because she's told me that they've expanded their grocery offerings there. And she was so crazy about it, she goes in there all the time. So I went in there this weekend, and it's amazing. If the public doesn't know about this, he's added, he's expanded his grocery options in there. And it's very, very convenient, and from what I'm told, the business is really good in there. So just a word for Mr. Taylor again, that's my report.
Would it be appropriate to put a word in for the guacamole and the pomegranate juice? Pretty phenomenal.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mayor Protem, you said nothing to report. Just two quick announcements. In March twenty-four, we are gonna have our State of the City. I know we'll have another city council meeting until then, but I just wanna make sure I make that announcement. Little different this year, we're gonna do it on a Saturday, and it's gonna be here at the Hart Park, so hopefully folks can attend. Also, Wisteria Festival is gonna be two whole days now instead of one day, and it's March seventeen and eighteen. I do not know the status of the Wisteria vine. I'm a little nervous considering our light rains, but hopefully we'll see a good turnout there. The last item I wanna report on, I know I've been getting a lot of emails, and I imagine my council members have also been getting inquiries about the status of our library survey. And just to give you an update, even though we don't have a final collective summary at this point, is that we have collected more than sixteen hundred surveys for a response rate of thirty-five percent, which sounds low, but considering this type of response, it's actually considered on the higher end, at least from the experience of the people we're working with. A couple of few dates, March second is the last day for data collection. March sixth through twenty-two will be data analysis and a draft report. And we hope to have a summary report to the city by mid-April, so look forward to that. I know people have been asking when there was a Phase One and a Phase Two of when it was distributed or mailed out. Hopefully you've seen that. And we look forward to more responses that we can collect and so that we can use that for data analysis. Okay. Our next item is for public comment, so for any item that is not on the agenda, if you would like to come forward, please state your name. And you have three minutes, and lucky for everyone tonight, our clock is broken, but we'll pretend to keep time.
Good evening, councilmembers. Debbie Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. And I do social research for a living, and thirty-five percent is amazing.
Yay, good to hear.
But anyway, that's not what I was going up here to say. I was a soccer referee while my kids were growing up. And I was taught at the time that if players and fans did not notice the referees, then they were doing a very good job. And that is what our current city council is. Most of the residents don't notice you because of the fantastic job that you're doing. And you jokingly say that there is no one in the audience unless someone is retiring or being honored in some way. And of course, I don't know who all these people are, but I'm sure we'll find out. And I wanted to say too, that I've lived in Sierra Madre for thirty years, and I've seen many city councils. You five make up the best council we have ever had. You work, you work so well together. You respect each other's viewpoints, and you've accomplished so much. And that's why we residents are usually not in regular attendance. We can count on you to govern with our best interests at heart. When councilmember Delmar was chairperson of the General Plan Update Steering Committee, and I was a member, we had several town hall forums to determine the guiding principles of our town. First and foremost was to maintain the character and small-town feel. Not no growth, but responsible growth. Along with that was fiscal responsibility. This council has strengthened our zoning laws to protect the property rights of current residents. And councilmembers Delmar and Arizmendi formed a subcommittee to study and to revamp the structure of the city hall employees. This plan was passed unanimously by the full city council and has saved the city thousands of dollars. Tonight, I am urging the residents to vote on April tenth and to vote for the three incumbents so that our city council can keep up the good work, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, and just one point of clarification, I believe, when we were on the subcommittee, it was not approved what we initially had recommended, but I just wanted to be clear about that.
My name is Bob Spears. I live at eighty West Grandview. I'm coming up to remind you that this Saturday is a very important event in town. Our Recreation Department hosts one of the more prestigious events in the San Gabriel Valley, the Mount Wilson Trail Race. And this Saturday, if you are a resident of Sierra Madre, we allow you to, we encourage you and allow you to register early. So for the first one hundred people in town, we reserve a spot, and you can come on Saturday to the Park House and register and run the, one of the second oldest race in California. And it'll be a wonderful event. So I look forward to seeing you all there.
Mr. Spears, do you know if my husband is committed yet?
I'm sure he has. I do, he's got the number of house.
Twist his arm a little bit.
What about you guys? Councilmember Capocha has run that, it's quite impressive.
Not anymore.
Councilmember?
No, I've done it in front, not the address, so.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi there, thank you. Thanks for taking my comment. So I'm a resident here, I actually live on Mariposa, so literally outside these doors. And I have a small issue I'd like to bring up, which I believe is pretty solvable regarding the police department. And it, to explain the issue, I need to tell a little anecdote. So my girlfriend, who's here with me, Sierra, her name actually is, she's the namesake of the town, I guess. She, she and I were playing tennis just here in Memorial Park, just outside these doors, actually. And we're playing tennis happily, we do it all the time, we live right here, and we heard a gunshot. Now, what do you do when you hear a gunshot? We stop playing tennis, we pause for a moment, and then we heard shouting. And the words we heard were, "Put your hands up." Now, at that moment, you think, well, what could be going on? A moment later, we hear another gunshot. What do we do then? We took it very seriously. We threw ourselves on the ground. Dropped our tennis rackets, making sure that there was no, no chance that somebody with a gun, be they a police officer, be they a gunman, God forbid, would mistake the tennis rackets for a weapon and fire on us. So we were, you know, very concerned for our lives in that moment. Not something that usually happens here in Sierra Madre. I find it to be one of the most peaceful places in Los Angeles County. But we're there doing this, and there's a child who's also heard the gunshots. The child ran and hid behind a tree. So now all three of us are very concerned that there's something very serious going on. Sierra and I then left the tennis courts, skulking, you know, as you do, as you'd see in movies. Hid behind the drinking fountain, then realized, well, if there were a person with a gun and they were to get away from the police, who seemed to be doing something, but we can't see through the trees. We're there in the tennis courts, there's a barrier of trees. All we hear is voices, but we can't make out everything, we just hear shouting. So we ran across Memorial Park, went to, I think it's called Congregational Church there on the corner, went inside. There was a choir practicing. We'd left our cellphones on the courts. Now, in that moment, I thought, well, I could announce to this whole church, you know, there's a shooting happening, everybody needs to panic. Luckily, you know, I, with some, you know, level-headedness, just discreetly borrowed a telephone, called the police department. And very quickly, the nine-one-one operator cleared things up, you know. It was not indeed a shooting. I'm sure you all would have heard about it if there had been such a thing. And, you know, everybody, you know, from that point on was very helpful. The nine-one operator cleared it up. You know, I then explained that I would go to the police department and talk to the person on duty to explain what our misapprehension of what had happened. So when I did that, and I talked to the officer on duty who'd been in charge of the exercise, it was an exercise, he called it, I didn't quite get the details, a beanbag exercise, maybe you know what that is.
And just in terms of time, we're at our three-minute limit.
Okay, I'll wrap things up. So in short, the police officer on duty said, in fact, you know, they will, they will change the practice. They will not, they'll figure out a way to, what I suggested is use a bullhorn, something to explain to people in the surrounding area that an exercise is underway. That you'll hear gunshots, they're not real gunshots, you know. Anyway, he seemed to assent to that idea, and he said that it won't be done in the same way again. Now, I take him by his word and fully expect that that's what's going to happen. I shook his hand. But I'm here today, and Sierra's with me today, to just get the assurance of the council and police officers present that there will indeed be a change in how these sessions are done. Not for our sake, I'm sure at this point we would know that an exercise is happening, but for other people's sake, you know, so that nobody else has the same misapprehension, and God forbid, nothing, you know, were to happen, you know, a hero with a gun comes out and tries to save the day, that sort of thing. I think.
So thank you so much for, and your name, and just to make sure, because Chief Ortiz is here, and I know he's hearing, and it looks like he's even taking notes, so.
Yeah. Yeah, my name is Tucker Capps, T-C-K-E-R, C-A-P-P-S. And I'd like it if you could, you know, submit my comments along with Sierra's thoughts as well. So Sierra Brown is her name, S-I-E-R-R-A-B-R-O-W-N.
Thank you so much.
And were your cellphones at the tennis courts when you went back?
Sorry, yes, yeah, they were, yeah. Wonderful low-crime town. Don't have to worry about it. So anyway, thanks, thanks for listening, and I know you guys will do the right thing.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to provide public comment on items that are not on the agenda?
Hi, I'm Carolyn Dasher, and I just would like to invite all of the council members and the mayor to the Wild and Scenic Film Festival. It's gonna be next Saturday at seven PM, and March tenth, so it's gonna be playing at the Sierra Madre Playhouse. We're real excited.
That's great.
And I'm gonna give this flyer to James so he can put it on the front, and it's gonna be really lovely, so all the viewing public, seven PM. Eight uplifting, inspiring, and motivational educational environmental films.
And thank you, Ms. Dasher. I understand that you were involved also in donating a screen, so thank you. Anyone else like to comment on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to presentations. And a special thank you to board member Larry Torres, when I reached out asking for an update as to the status of PUSD. He responded back very positively, so thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting me, and Mayor Arizmendi and city council. Well, and it's good to see you again. I think I'd like to start, this was a presentation that was given to the Pasadena City Council, and I'm glad you called because I didn't want you to feel left out. I think one of the things, there's been a lot of concern and questions about the state of the budgets in Pasadena Unified. I think before I begin, I'd like to just give a little context. And first, I'd like to thank the citizens of Sierra Madre and the Greater Pasadena Unified School District. I have to tell you, I came on the council, became a board member in two thousand and fifteen, and it has been extraordinarily wonderful event of having people come up and say how passionate they are about the schools in our community, and how important they are, and how they make a difference in the lives of children. And I am humbled by that. I'm a longtime educator. I've worked in L.A. Unified for over thirty years, and it's just, it is heartwarming to see. And back, I think in November, there was a ballot initiative that was passed that was to fully fund, I think as Governor Brown said it, his educational agenda. And one of the things that Governor Brown neglected to mention, perhaps, is that fully funding education, there was a small caveat that he left out, was that it was fully funding education to two thousand and eight levels. And so we are back to two thousand and eight levels, but by the end of his term, we should be. And so when you start to see some of the numbers that are coming out, you know, just recognize that California is no better than forty-fifth in per pupil funding for, of all the states in the United States. And some states do as much as double, if not even more, than what we do. And so just to put that in context, as we go forward.
All right.
So Pasadena Unified has a little under seventeen thousand students. We are a district in declining enrollment and have been for at least a decade. So we have seventeen hundred full-time employees. I think we're the number-two employer in Pasadena. And we have a revenue in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen of two hundred and seventeen million dollars, and eighty percent is for salaries. And that's about right. That's about normal for most school districts in the state of California. And, you know, the graduates of PUSD, I know, have been accepted to many public and private schools, you know, throughout the United States. My own daughter, who graduated last year from Pasadena High School, is going to school in Europe on a music scholarship. And so there's a lot of opportunities for public school students. You know, the top twenty-five percent of all kids in California school, public schools, are guaranteed admission into the California colleges. And so that's something to take into consideration when you're thinking about where to send your child. Because a leg up in a lot of the California universities, as you know, can be quite an advantage. Okay, so our general fund, and you can see the blue line is the revenues, and the red lines are the expenditures. And one of the things that I'd like to point out is, I have never, on my term as a school board member, sent in a negative budget, a budget with a deficit at it. As a matter of fact, when we left at the end of June, we had put money into the surplus, for the school surplus. And when we got back in August, we realized that expanding out, you know, to the entire year, we were gonna run into something like a six-million-dollar deficit this year, and running into something like a fifteen-million-dollar deficit next school year. And that's caused by a couple of reasons. One of the things that you would be familiar with as a city agency are the Stirs and Purrs contribution, which has to do with pension benefits. And you can notice the amount of funding that the employer had to be responsible for, for retirement pensions, has increased from something like ten million dollars to twenty-two million dollars in just a matter of four years. And so, and that all encroaches on the general fund. That is not, you know, there's nothing to do about that. That is a state requirement, and they require all school districts throughout the state of California to meet these obligations. Okay, and there's other encroachments on the budget, you know, as well. Special education funding has increased dramatically in the last four years as well. And, you know, I don't, I don't wanna say any one particular group is at fault for this, because that's not the case. But it just goes to show about the, when you have a district of declining enrollment, you know, and you have costs going up that are really beyond your control, that you, that budgeting becomes very, very tight. Okay, so what are we doing? All right, so our plan is, in the next two years, is both to, we need to replenish our reserve. There's a requirement of a three percent reserve of all school districts. We are attempting to realign resources to different schools. And we are trying to, what we're calling, right-size our school district with both in terms looking at schools and attendance at schools, and sizes of schools, as well as core functions that we're providing, and whether or not the services we are providing, we can in fact afford. Okay, so we're re-looking at all the different, I guess, processes. With, what we're attempting to do is to say, okay, so the core job of school, the educational core, is the teacher, student, and the content they are trying to deliver. And so we're starting from there, and then saying, okay, what is it that is most important to that educational core? And whatever that is, we will fund, and as you get further away from that, then those become the important questions about what it is that we can afford, and how we're gonna look at, you know, cutting our budget. And we're attempting as best we can to keep it away from classroom. All right. So our reductions for this school year, we've identified some cuts that are gonna total about six-point-nine million. And for next school year, about fourteen million, but recognize that you can't add sixteen and fourteen together and get twenty because some of those in the six-point-nine million will be non-reoccurring expenditures. Okay? Okay, so we had attempted to offer an early retirement incentive, like a golden handshake. Unfortunately, our labor partners and ourselves were unable to reach agreement as of today. So hopefully this will come about, but as of right now, that's off the table. Our hope was, is that obviously if you can reduce the cost of your workforce, you won't have to lay off as many teachers. And so if you can encourage some of your more veteran faculty to retire, it'll allow you to keep some of your younger teachers. Okay, so we are also planning on maintaining our different programs, our dual-language programs, such as our Spanish and Mandarin program, our International Baccalaureate Program, magnet programs. programs. The plan is, is we will keep those intact as best we can as we're making these cuts. Let's see what else. So, I think that is pretty much it. So, if you have any questions, I will attempt to answer them. I also wanted to say one other thing that's off-topic. I know there is some, we've had some conversations about the elementary school field and public access to that. I've spoken to our facilities chief. And what I would encourage your city manager to do is to reach out to our facilities chief to have a new MOU developed.
Thank you for that because I do know we had some Boy Scouts here yesterday at the Community Services Commission that expressed that as a desire.
Okay, so if you could have that happen, I would, that should help solve that.
So, I would like to ask a question, and I know this is a larger district issue, but to be a tad bit selfish, how do you anticipate this is going to impact Sierra Madre? Are we fully enrolled at the elementary school and at the middle school? And do we anticipate any cuts?
I don't anticipate very much happening here. The schools aren't fully enrolled. You may have some personnel movement, but I don't anticipate many. Much of the faculty here, I've been there for quite a number of years. And, you know, one of the things that we're attempting to protect is our programs that are quite popular. So, for example, in the middle school, I know there's, the dual-language Mandarin program is housed there. And so, those teachers, I believe, will, you know, be looked at more carefully as we do, you know, cuts to staff.
And as well as the Math Academy, I believe.
Yes, that's correct. And the Math Academy received a large grant, I think three-hundred-thousand dollars to, for operating for the next few years. So, I think fiscally, for the Math Academy, I think there'll be no concerns about that.
And also considering how long it took to, for the middle school and to ensure some stability there, I mean, the residents in our city, is this me? The citizens in our city and our residents really had to go through a lot of transition when we didn't have a facility there and students that were hoping to go to school there. But given the years that we had to adjust, I'm hoping there's going to be little to no change there, so again, to ensure some consistency.
That's certainly my hope as well.
Yeah, Mr. Torres, how about the declining enrollment? Do you see that turning around or have, what is the root cause of that? Is it, you said it's continuing to decline over ten years, but is the rate of declining slowing?
Well, I first came on the board in 2015 and the last two years has seen a decline of maybe ten students, fifteen students each year. I mean, it's been very minimal and it's been well, it's actually been a lot less than predicted. And this year was probably a hundred-and-fifty students, and so, it was quite a bit more, but still quite a bit less than had been projected.
Is it proportionate to the possible kids that could be going? I mean, I don't know how many children live in Pasadena, but is the percentage of people changing?
I don't believe so. We have demographic reports, you know, I mean, as you do your planning, you try to get as much information as you can. And so, we have projections, the, you know, the major driving factor in that is housing prices. And, you know, families and with children, it's just become, they've been priced out of many markets in Pasadena. And so, it just becomes, you know, that I believe is the biggest driver in the declining enrollment. I think actually, we're, with a lot of our programs, such as the Math Academy, we're getting more folks from out of district coming into the, into our schools. And I'm very proud of many of the programs that PUSD has to offer now. And there's always room for improvement and that, but I feel very hopeful that people, once they get in the doors of the school, will say, yeah, I can see sending my children here.
Yeah, but it just seems like such a huge problem because the fewer students, the less funding you get, then you've got underutilized facilities that now you're trying to deal with. And that, you know, in other cities and other parts of the nation, I know Chicago really struggled with that and it has a devastating effect. So, I'm just wondering if you see any turnaround in sight or...
I think we're hoping for more stabilization. That's my hope. I mean, it's, I think, I think more folks are at least giving a look to the Pasadena schools and the, I think we're doing a better job educating children. I think people are saying that it looks like an educational option for their families. And, you know, hopefully, as we go forward, this becomes, you know, at least it stabilizes more. So, but where the bottom is, I just can't tell you. I don't know.
So, when you're looking at your demographics, are you seeing that the decline is at the primary schools or are you seeing the decline at the high schools? I mean, I can see it if it's at the primary schools, you just don't have the kids coming into the system because they're not in the neighborhoods to go. So, then you can start consolidating those elementary schools, but are you seeing the decline through all of the grades where you're really not looking at the population?
Well, you have some points where you, children move on to other places. And that tends to be after eighth grade.
Okay.
Going on to high school. But, so, one of the things we're attempting to do is, you know, with the early childhood, early TK transitional kindergarten program, you know, that we can get kids to the schools so families can say, to look at the program and to look at the school perhaps more closely when they're sending their child there. You know, and unfortunately, there's not a lot of funding for that. So, then where does that funding come from? It comes from out of your general fund, right? And then you have to balance, well, where are we going to put it? And so, it really is an ongoing sort of making your best bets with the money you have about where you think, you know, what's going to have the most impact on student enrollments and those issues.
Any other questions for Mr. Torres?
First, thanks for coming, Representative Torres. Good to see you. You mentioned on your bullet points that you're trying to rebuild the reserve and that the reserves are, it's pegged minimally at three percent.
That's right.
So, where are you guys at? And if it's below minimum, why did it get below minimum?
Well, it will be at three percent. I mean, it's...
That's your projection that you gave?
That's our projection. And I don't think anybody on the board is willing to entertain, you know, that's our job. And, you know, I'm certainly going to do whatever I can to make sure that happens because that's, you have to. You know, as a public official, you have to do what you need to do to balance your budget. And I refuse to not do that. So, and, you know, I, I think what happens, you know, as you know, every year, even without a raise, your costs go up because of step and column and longevity, right? And so, our, even if we give no raise, our cost for employees goes up one percent. And so, I don't know, I think we just got hit with a lot of unforeseen expenditures with things that we now have to come to terms with of what's really important for Pasadena Unified and to go forth.
So, you're saying that the three percent will be achieved within the next year and a half?
Yeah, three percent, it will be there by June. I think that's our, you know, one of the other things to keep in mind is that the governor is projecting a large amount of one-time money that will be pushed out to schools again in June. I don't know what, how much that'll be. Last year, it was eleven million dollars and the year before, it was something perhaps nine million dollars. And so, California is running a larger budget surplus than they had anticipated. And so, there will be a large, that's what we've been told by our folks. So, you know, I think all of that will help to make certain we get where we need to go.
Yeah, just, how can we help? You know, I mean, I think that you just touched on one way that I think we can help is call our legislators and hopefully have them help. But, I mean, have you guys, has the board thought about how we in the Pasadena City Council can aid you in any way that we can?
You know, I think, I think, oh, well, I'll talk to you privately about some of the things.
Sure.
But I think honestly, I think you just, coming to our schools and coming to our school events and being present is a big help. Because if our town leaders, you know, bring a spotlight to our schools, and I'm very proud of our schools in Sierra Madre, as are so many folks, that it just shines a brighter light to say, you know, these are things, these are community assets and very valuable ones. And you should come look and come see and, you know, if they're right for you and your family. Because I think, I think our schools do a tremendous job. And I would love, you know, to invite all of you again and again and again to come to our community events, so.
Well, and the Sierra Madre Elementary School just had their grand opening this past year on their STEAM lab and really amazing work that they're doing there. I have one last question, and even though this is a presentation item, I actually will allow for a public comment unless there's a problem with that, I don't think so, given the impact that it has on residents. But understanding what the County Office of Education's role is now, is the expectation with this plan, this two-year plan, that there will not be this extra level of monitoring from the county office?
They have sent over a, just someone to review our, our plan, our fiscal plan. And my understanding is they're quite happy with it. I've been told that privately and so, I don't foresee any issue going forward.
Great, so we look forward to you coming back and reporting to see how that goes. I don't want you to be a stranger here, not just in these times when there's challenges and questions, but just on a regular basis. So, thank you for coming tonight. But again, before we let you leave, I do want to just take a moment to see if there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on this. And again, because it's a presentation item, I'll just ask you to keep your comments to a minute if you'd like to comment or have a question on this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Seeing none.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move to the next section of our agenda. We have our action items and the consent calendar. And Mr. City Manager, I'm going to look towards you to present those.
Mayor, we have five items on consent this evening. Item A, adoption of Resolution eighteen dash zero eight of the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre approving certain demands. B, granular activated carbon replacement. C, treasurer's report quarter ending December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen. D, professional services agreement, Hong Tam Structural Engineering Plan Check Services. And E, comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen.
Right, and I do notice that our city treasurer, Mr. Michael Amrio, is in the audience too, I assume, on the CAFER issue, but since we talked about Little League earlier, he did throw out the first pitch. You can get video on that to determine how well he did.
Did he reach the plate?
Actually, he threw a good fastball. Yes, yes.
Okay, so on items A through F, or A through E, do we have any questions from the council?
I just wanted to know if our treasurer did want to come up and do the report, or are we okay just with it like it is?
I'm okay with it the way it is. Great job by the treasurer.
I have one comment on the contract with Mr. Tam and one question about it. So, it says the commencement date is February twentieth. Is that, that's in the past, is that okay? Or does that need to be changed?
I think we'll make the update.
Okay, then one question on his hourly rate for engineering services, a hundred-and-fifty dollars an hour, is that a, is that a pass-through? How does, how does that occur?
So, we, if we wanted him to do anything outside of plan check, like a site visitor visit a site, then we would pay him to provide that service. It would not be a pass-through because it would be at our request, not the rest of it.
Okay, I see, thank you.
Another quick follow-up to that. So, we're going to collect forty percent instead of twenty-five, but there's no net increased cost to our citizens.
That's correct. Our, the sixty-forty split is in line with what all of our other contracted services are. It's what the market has dictated, and we wanted to bring this contract in line with the others.
I didn't see any projection for what the actual number would be for this year. I guess you're just going with what you've actually brought in.
Yeah, it depends on actual activity. So, the more plan checks, the...
But you've been getting a lot, right?
We've been pretty consistent, yes.
Okay, any other questions on the consent?
Just a quick question on the granular activated carbon for Utility Director Reynosa. Just a quick one, just a quick. You had to get a question from somebody on the Water Subcommittee, wouldn't be a full evening, right? So, I just wanted to make sure that I'm getting this. We're saving money by going to these, this contractor, right? About twenty thousand dollars. There's no change in the product at all? It's going to have the same impact on our water?
It's going to be the same price. For the July change-up, it will be the same price.
Okay, so we, there's absolutely no change in terms of how we're treating our water then?
No.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions from council, I will open this up to public comment. If anyone in the public would like to comment on any item on the consent calendar. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion.
I just want to thank the city manager for negotiating the contract with Mr. Tam. I know Mr. Tam is, you know, very highly regarded plan checker in town and the contractors love him, and so, just great job in getting us a better deal.
And just want to applaud the city staff on the CAFER, especially the assistant city manager. Medina, I thought very comprehensive and it looks great, so very nice job.
Second that. Okay, seeing no other discussion on the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve.
Did we do public, huh?
Yeah, and I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Given we have deleted the next item, we'll move into discussion and it will be the consideration of appointment to the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Commission. I don't know if we'll have a presentation on that. I'm looking at management analyst Carlson, and no, so...
It's Laura's gig.
Ah, hello. Assistant City Clerk Laura Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. There are currently two vacancies on the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Commission for the terms of twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty-one. Members of the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Commission are appointed by the council to serve a four-year term, and they may serve up to two consecutive terms. Staff advertised the vacancies through the city's website, the city's bi-weekly electronic newsletter, and have previously provided the applications to the city council. and have previously provided the applications to the city council for their review. There were a total of four applications received for the two vacancies. However, one of the applicants, Ms. Hoskins, withdrew yesterday citing job-related obligations. So the three remaining applicants are Mr. Paul Cranmer, Ms. Jessica DeBusk, and Mr. Nazareth Naz Genzian. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for assistant city clerk at this time? No. Okay, and I don't know who we have present here, but we typically like to invite our applicants if they would like to share a few words. I'd be more than happy to take this alphabetically if that pleases our applicants. So is Mr. Paul Kramer in?
I am here.
The chamber, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Paul Cranmer. I've been living in Sierra Madre for five years now. So, my, my background is in environmental sciences. I got a degree from Cal Poly in that. And I've been in the public service for close to ten years now. I've worked for other cities, and I'm currently in the Public Works Department at a adjacent city right now. And so I think that those sort of aspects and backgrounds that I have will help me kind of gain some interest here on this commission. I am currently a certified arborist, and I have run, I've run the urban forest management program for the city of Claremont previously, so I have a lot of experience with working with residents in the city in touchy subjects and environments, as far as trees and so. Having said that, do you have any questions for me?
Do you have any questions for Mr. Kramer? Am I pronouncing that correctly? Kramner?
Cranmer.
Cranmer.
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for applying.
And is Jessica DeBusk in chambers? Welcome.
Hi, good evening. I am Jessica DeBusk. I am a resident of Sierra Madre. I've lived here for five years now. Professionally, I am a program manager and paleontologist at Rincon Consultants within our natural and cultural resources service line. At Rincon, we provide technical services for private and public sector clients to help them comply with local, state, and federal environmental laws and regulations. Last year, I earned an MBA in sustainability from Cal State Long Beach. And in that program, I was able to work very closely with the city of Long Beach for about a year on their green, on the Office of Sustainability's green field program. So that includes parkway tree planting, gray water demonstrations, mulch delivery, green initiatives such as those. And what I did for the city of Long Beach was help them analyze those programs for not only their environmental impact, but their impact socially and their economic impact in the community of Long Beach. So with that said, I thought this would be an interesting opportunity. I saw it in the newsletter and I applied, and I am very happy to be considered. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for at this time?
No, I just do have a quick comment. I did go to your LinkedIn page.
Oh, okay.
Very impressive.
Thanks.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, and do we have Nazareth or Naz, or Jan Sezian? Jan Sezian?
Yes, John Sezian.
Jan Sezian.
Good evening.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you for this chance to chat with you for a few minutes about this position. I'll share with you my thoughts on why I wanted to be a member on the commission. Several years ago, I founded a solar energy company, and our company is doing remarkably well. We're growing very, very fast. We're focusing on large-scale commercial projects. So in my everyday world, my work is with a team of engineers and scientists and people focused on clean energy, renewable energy, focusing on protecting our environment. My thinking was that I could put this knowledge and experience to good use by volunteering for the commission. And in the fall, I'm going to start an MBA program with a special focus on sustainability. Most likely will either be UC Irvine or UCLA. Therefore, I will have lots of opportunities to be exposed to latest innovations and solutions in protecting our environment and sustainability. If I had the opportunity to be on the commission, I think I would approach it with great dedication and passion. It would be very exciting for me. And if not this time, that's okay too. Maybe in the future, we'll have other openings, other opportunities on the commission. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions at this time? Okay, do we typically do public comment for?
We have.
We have? Okay.
Totally up to you.
So, at this point, since we didn't have any questions for the applicants, I will give an opportunity for public comment on this item. Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to discussion for our council.
Well, once again, we have a lot of very talented people who applied, which always makes it difficult. So where do you want to go from here?
If anyone would like to comment, or we could very easily go around the table and ask for votes?
I'll go ahead and just give you the two that I think. I'm in favor of Mr. Cranmer and Ms. DeBusk. I think Mr. Jan Sezian's resume is very good, but just, just because he's not a member, he doesn't live in Sierra Madre, that weighs very, very heavily with me, so. So those are my two.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I had the same picks, and I do think Mr. Jan Sezian, it's, again, very qualified. I think that the fact that you don't live in Sierra Madre is definitely a factor. And I think that if we didn't have two other very qualified folks in the environmental space, then maybe it wouldn't weigh as much, but I think that both Mr. Cranmer and Ms. DeBusk would be great on the commission. But I want to thank all three of you for applying, so.
I'd like to thank all three of you for applying, too. Very impressive people. We have a lot of impressive people already on that commission, and so we are of an embarrassment of riches here, but I have to concur with what my colleagues are saying. I think that, all things being equal, I would prefer that residents of our city serve on our commissions, and certainly Ms. DeBusk and Mr. Cranmer have outstanding resumes, and I think they're highly qualified, so that would be my vote as well.
And I concur with my colleagues. Again, we appreciate everybody applying, but my weight would go to the Sierra Madre residents. And both Mr. Kramer and Ms. DeBusk have exemplary resumes and experience. I was really impressed with Ms. DeBusk's experience with the city of Long Beach. I think she'll be able to bring so much to our city, so those would be my two selections.
Mr. Jan Sezian, I now have your name down after hearing it multiple times. Thank you so much for your application, and similar to my colleagues, it sounds like it would be unanimous in terms of when we're looking at residency, so, and qualification. I mean, all of you are very qualified in different areas, so I do thank all of you. And I can take a vote on this if we'd like to.
Yeah, it's our recommendation to you as the mayor, and then we confirm...
Every time we go through our appointments, I get that same response from councilman.
We've given you our recommendations.
We are appointing, we will be appointing Ms. Jessica DeBusk and Paul Kramner for the two vacant positions on the ENER commission. Congratulations.
Wait, 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 we do need to confirm, the council needs to vote to confirm it, correct?
Right.
Do we still, a vote to confirm my recommendations?
Yeah.
Let's vote to confirm my recommendations of your recommendations.
Yeah, exactly.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations now officially, so thank you so much. Okay, and the next item, now that we have that dress rehearsal in order, we can move on to the appointment of the unexpired city clerk, and I think assistant city clerk Laura Aguilar will be presenting on this item.
Good evening, once again. The city clerk, the city, excuse me, the city council received notice from the elected city clerk Melinda Correo resigning her position effective January fifth, two thousand eighteen, last month. City clerk Correo was elected to city clerk in April of two thousand sixteen to serve a four-year term, which would have ended April of two thousand twenty. Government Code Section thirty-six fifty-two B states that the council shall, within sixty days from the commencement of the vacancy, either fill the vacancy or, fill the vacancy by appointment or call a special election to fill the vacancy. At the January ninth city council meeting, the city council directed city staff to begin solicitation of applications, of applicants for filling the unexpired term of the city clerk. City staff advertised the vacancy through various medias, including social media, the city's website, press releases to several media outlets, the city's biweekly electronic newsletter, and a notice was published in the city's adjudicated newspaper, the Mountain Views News. City staff has received four applicants who have come forward to apply for the city clerk position. The city council may only appoint an elector of the city. The decision to appoint must be made within sixty days, and the last day to make an appointment is March sixth of two thousand eighteen. The applicants in alphabetical order are Mr. Christopher O. Bamberger, Ms. Carolyn Joy Dasher, Ms. Alexandra E. Potter Watts, and Ms. Sue Ann Spears. The applicants were all previously notified that the council would be discussing the appointments this evening, and they are all present. The duties of the city clerk, whether elected or appointed, are set forth in the Government Code Section four zero eight zero one through four zero eight one one, and they pertain to the city of Sierra Madre as follows. To keep an accurate record of the proceedings of the legislative body, to keep and record all city ordinances and clerk certificates next to each, which record with the certificate constitutes prima facie evidence of the contents of each ordinance and its passage and publication, and is admissible as such evidence in any court and proceedings, and act as the custodian of the city seal. The stipend paid to the appointed city clerk will be two hundred and fifty dollars per month, beginning March first and concluding April in two thousand twenty. It is staff's recommendation that the city council appoint an elector of the city to fill the unexpired term of the city clerk until April two thousand twenty, and direct the assistant city clerk to administer the oath of allegiance for public officials. And that concludes my report. I am available for any questions.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, just a point of order. This, this time is a little different than naming a person to a commission. This is, I guess, the full council, so at some point after discussion, a motion will be made and we'll vote on it. So we're not making the recommendation.
My dress rehearsal meant nothing. But you did really well.
You did.
And just also to the microphones, I don't know if we're getting some feedback, I don't know if we can check on that, thank you. Okay, so any questions for assistant city clerk?
I do have one. We do have one of our applicants who is currently serving on a commission. Would that applicant, if appointed, be required to step down from the commission, or would she be able to continue her duties?
When the applicant expressed interest in applying for the position, we did look into that, and there is no conflict. They are, well, they are able to serve in both capacities.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So given that all of our applicants are in chambers, I would like to invite, in alphabetical order, first, Mr. Christopher Bamberger, if you'd like to say a few words.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a few moments to thank the council for the opportunity to be, for the opportunity to be considered for the position of city clerk, and I would be honored to have the opportunity to serve my community in that position.
Thank you. And next up in alphabetical order, if we can invite Ms. Carolyn Dasher to the podium, please.
I'm going to talk more than he did. Honorable Mayor Arizmendi, council members Capocha, Harabedian, Delmar, and Glas, thank you for this opportunity. I have been a resident of Sierra Madre for eighteen years. It is a pleasure to serve in the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Commission. I've been part of environmental education for our city by hosting public classes on water conservation and water harvesting at my home. In this effort, I have also given a presentation on water harvesting in these chambers. As a commissioner, I have continued to seek educational, inspiring, and motivational films for the city through our film festival. As you know, on March tenth, we will have the Sierra Madre Third Annual Wild and Scenic Film Festival at our own Sierra Madre Playhouse. In my professional life, I am licensed as a certified shorthand reporter. I have worked for the Los Angeles Spirit Court for over thirty years. I understand the importance of meeting deadlines and accurate note-taking. I have experience working with local and state nonprofit organizations. I'm aware of parliamentary procedures. I have served in multiple positions as secretary and president, both for the Los Angeles County Court Reporters Association, and I am currently serving as president of the California Court Reporters Association. I've been involved in legislative advocacy for the past fifteen years, and in that role, I have provided to the California Legislature ideas on how our court system can better serve the public. And I just want to thank you just for the consideration.
Thank you. Next, I would like to invite Ms. Sue Ann Spears to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and city manager. My name is Sue Spears, and I live on Grandview Avenue. I moved to Sierra Madre almost thirty-five years ago, and my husband Bob and I love this community very much. It would be an honor and a privilege to serve the city, the members of the city council, and the residents of Sierra Madre as your city clerk. As a Los Angeles Unified School District certificate employee for forty-two years, thirty-two and a half of which I served as an administrator, I have a clear understanding of the operations and demands of public government service and the need to be responsive to the public. In addition, I recognize the importance of being cognizant of community and cultural sensitivities when working with the public. I work regularly with both California State and United States federal agencies, and as a result, am thoroughly versed regarding standards of quality, accurate and timely written and oral communication, both internally and externally. I have a strong work ethic, and my work products reflects, I'm sorry, my work products reflect a dedication to producing high-quality, accurate, and timely documents. In addition, I regularly demonstrated the ability to maintain appropriate confidentiality at all times. I have a positive attitude and can work well with city employees, elected officials, outside agencies, and the public. I am honest, forthright, and fair. I know that the minutes of the Sierra Madre City Council meetings are important legal documents for the community and must be accurately and produced in a timely manner. I am currently retired and have the time and energy to dedicate myself to performing the duties of Sierra Madre city clerk in exemplary manner. I welcome the opportunity to serve the city of Sierra Madre and its residents, and will do everything within my power to perform in a manner that we can all be proud of. Thank you for your consideration of my application, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Next, I would like to invite Alexandra E. Potter Watts to the podium.
Hi, my name is Alexandra E. Potter Watts. I've lived in Sierra Madre for thirty-two years. I was looking to try something new because I like to learn new things. I know I've talked to John Capocha and John Harabedian. I'm not sure what to say, so if the, so if the other people would like to ask me a question, I'd be happy to answer at this point. You know, if you have something that you'd like to know about me.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you so much. Okay, so given that we did not really ask them any questions, I don't know if we want to call them back necessarily, but since I did allow for public comment for the first item, or for the appointment item on the ENER commission, I'll go ahead and allow for public comment on this item, if we don't have any questions. comment on this item, if we don't have any questions. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring this back for discussion.
Yeah, you know, I'll just start by saying that this process is a very important one, as we all know, but it, it was really a pleasure getting to know these applicants and just talking to them, and it really reinvigorated me to see such civic engagement, and really every one of the four applicants, just so passionate about the city and wanting to serve for all the right reasons. So, you know, I think that, obviously, you never want to have a, an elected official step aside and have to fill it, but I really think this is a great opportunity because I think any one of these applicants would be great. And I did get a chance to talk to all of them, and again, I think it's very, you know, it's a very hard decision. Those are my general comments. Do you want to know what my pick is first, or does everyone want to go?
We can have, we can have general comments from everyone.
I feel the same as council member Harabedian. I interviewed three of them. I did not interview the fourth. Just had a disconnect, left a message, didn't get back. But for the three I talked to, I'm extremely grateful and impressed with the quality, and I, I know I'd just be really happy with any of them. I think those three would do a great job.
You know, I'll have to concur. I just was pleased that we got the applicants that, and the people who wanted to serve as the city clerk, who have a civic pride and want to do a good job, and a quality job, and undertake this. I agree with council member Harabedian. It was very refreshing, and after we did lose our elected official, to, to see that we do have those that want to step up, and I agree, any of these applicants would be, serve the city of Sierra Madre well.
I'll throw my, my vote to that. I, I think that, I was a little surprised, frankly, that we got so many quality people to apply, because historically, it's been, we've had one person doing it all the time, never had anyone run against her except once, and so it's not like this has been, as an elected position, something that's been, you know, sought over or competed for. So this is a fantastic development, I think, for our city to have quality people, all of whom could do the job. There's no question about that. So I thank them all for applying, and I'll hold all my other comments until everyone's had a chance to make a general statement.
So, I'll just say that, you know, despite where this goes tonight, and, and hearing what council member Goss had just shared, is that we, it's been a challenge to get residents to apply, to run for this position, and we all know how important it is. I think one of the comments that I've heard, and I'm sure my colleagues have also in this last couple of months, has been, you know, how are we going to ensure that we are getting the minutes from the, the council meeting? How, how do we ensure that there is that transparency, that the communication is going to the residents? So it's a very important position, and I hope, no matter what happens tonight, that whether it's the other three that have applied, that are not appointed tonight, that will consider running, because that's, this will be coming back in two years. This is not a one-time event, and we encourage you to do so, because this is really, again, a, a critical elected position that we have in our city. So, with that.
Yeah, and I'll just, you know, I can start with my pick. My pick is, is Sue Spears, and, you know, this was, again, a very difficult decision. I thought that, I thought that, that Ms. Spears really had a really good idea of what she wants to do, and things that can, can be accomplished by the city clerk. That really hadn't occurred to me until I talked to her, and I thought her, her dedication to doing that going forward was, was exemplified, not only in her, her previous leadership volunteer positions here in the city, but just in the way that she communicated her desire for the position over the phone. So, Ms. Spears would be my pick, but again, I, I would encourage the other folks to run for city council. I mean, I think that.
There you go.
You know, I, I really think, honestly, this was, this was, this was a very difficult decision, and I know that we will continue to have, well, we'll see what happens, but I'll, Ms. Dasher, we have the privilege of having her on the inner commission, and, and I hope Mr. Bamberger, you know, continues applying for things, and again, runs for something maybe. And then Ms. Potter Watts, again, you know, would love to see her involved as well, so.
I'm just going to lay it out there. This is the toughest appointment decision I've made since I've been here, and we've had some tough ones. Tough because you have good people you happen to know, you don't want to hurt people's feelings, it's tough. I made a kind of process of elimination. I mean, what, on what criteria could I use? First criteria, were they qualified? Could they sit up here and do the job? Could they do the job of a city clerk, you know, behind the scenes when you're not here on Tuesday nights? And I believe they all make that, have made that case. I, I've always thought, when everything else is equal, that I always like to either, without using the term reward, at least acknowledge the past service that a person has given to our city, as a volunteer, or in some form, on a commission, or in some form. And we have two people that I think stand out, and that is Carolyn Dasher and Sue Spears. So, to me, then it comes down to, well, who, who, who do I give the nod to? Because I have tremendous respect and admiration for both of them. I'm going to go with Sue Spears. It's a close call. I think Sue's longtime experience here in the city and all the contributions she's made outweigh slightly Ms. Dasher's, uh, 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 application, but as I, as I talked to three of the four candidates, uh, application candidates, I actually encouraged a couple of them to consider running for city council myself. So, because it's just not often that you get this kind of quality to apply for, for a position like this. So that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you.
I'll go next. Council member Goss expresses my thoughts much better than I could myself, so I'm not going to say anything other than you expressing my thoughts exactly, so.
So, again, this was very difficult. I had narrowed my two down to the same two that you did, and I wanted to, to, to try to come to some sort of fair decision, and really couldn't. So, what I, what I came down to is, as much as I appreciate Ms. Dasher's work in the, with the inner commission, I want her to continue that and have the time to do the film studies and all the work that she's doing on that, not have to take up that time on the city clerk, and I would certainly make the appointment for Sue Spears. But again, all of these applicants were tremendous and wonderful, and please run for city council.
I, I think I foresee what's going to happen in 2020 with the elections. I probably won't be adding too much, which, with what's already been said. I do, again, want to thank all those that applied. My top two came out to Ms. Carolyn Dasher and Ms. Sue Spears, and I had the opportunity to speak with them, and a lot because of their, my interactions with them at, at a civic level. So it wasn't just because of this application, but in their interactions at, in the city. And it's really tough. Ms. Dasher, I just want to commend you. I mean, when I'm hearing court reporter, I'm thinking that automatically is, is, is something that I would feel is in alignment with what we're looking for as city clerk. And I do actually commend you for so much of the work you've done with the inner commission. The reason I am going to put my vote behind Ms. Spears is because of her experience at the interaction with the government level, and at the federal and the state, and I think her experience administrative. Again, not to take away what your, what your experience has been in terms of court report, but I do want to put my vote behind Ms. Spears, and it sounds like that might be unanimous here, but we can formally take a, a vote. And I hope this does not discourage, but hopefully encourages, all of the other applicants, because as you hear it, I'm saying to run for city clerk, but I'm hearing up here, you should be running for city council. So, thank you again. This really was a difficult decision, but I hope this still encourages you to do the work in, in the city, and thank you for so much for all of your civic engagement. So with that, I will take a call for a motion.
Sure, and I'll move to appoint Ms. Spears as our city clerk.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, everyone.
Congratulations, Ms. Spears.
Congratulations. I believe she's, I believe she gets sworn in. Yeah. Right now.
So, we, we are, we would like to swear in Ms. Spears as city clerk, so that she can begin effective March 1st.
How exciting. That's great.
Do we have any of her family here?
I think that Mr. Bob Smears, maybe in the back. He's even wearing like a coat or something back there.
That was a tough one there.
That's hard.
Y'all just stand right there.
I'm going to ask you to reach your hand, and please read the oath.
I, Sue Ann Spears, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will, that I will well, oh, I'm sorry, and I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Wow. Congratulations, city clerk Spears.
That cannot work more. Ah.
Okay, so our next item on the agenda for discussion is Community Services Department 2018 Special Events Timeline, and I believe we'll be. Asking Ms. Community Services Manager, Ms. Rebecca Silva.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable City Council. First of all, I just also want to congratulate Sue Spears. On my first day on the job here, she was one of the individuals that walked right in and said, oh, so you're the new person in Community Services. So she made herself well-known, so congratulations, Sue. So, this is going to serve as basically a calendar at a glance of our special events for the 2018 year. Although I know most of you, all of you are, are pretty much aware of the programming of the events that we do, but this is kind of a personal save-the-dates for you to start plugging into your calendars, as I know that you are all extremely busy. So, we're just around the corner from our annual Huck Finn Fishing Derby, and as you know, we have that at the fishing ponds over at our Public Works Yard. This year's event is a two-day event, and it starts on Friday, March 23rd, with a check-in at 5:00 PM for the family campout and participant check-in, and that's assisted by our Rotary Club volunteers, and that includes bonfires, smores, and then we also have stargazing, and that's brought on by the volunteers through the Los Angeles Astronomical Society. And then, that leads into Saturday, March 24th, bright and early. We start with the youth fishing derby, that's at 7:00 AM to 11:30 AM, and that's also assisted by our Civic Club volunteers that do a great job. And they also assist with the Fisher Awards and the trophies that are given to the participants. And then we lead into family fishing. There's an hour break there in between for staff to do some clearing out and cleaning up a little bit, and then we invite family fishing to start up again, and that's from 12:30 PM to 4 o'clock PM. Some of our Huck Finn past attendance, some numbers to share with you. We had 55 families registered for the campout in 2017. Again, Sierra Madre Rotary assisted with the check-in at varied times and hosted the smores. They actually brought in their supplies and held that there at the campfire. And then we had 158 youth, 158 youth total, so 100 from the campout, and then 58 that walked in on the morning of, who participated in the derby festivities. And as usual, we can't do it with any of our past contributors, from our Firefighters Association all the way down through, to our businesses such as Podley Properties. And we also had some volunteer fishing guides that were led in the past by Chris Campbell. So, again, thank you to those individuals that have really supported our staff.
Getting knotted up.
And then, someone stole my thunder earlier. Mr. Spears was here, and he announced a little bit about the Mount Wilson Trail Race, but I just wanted to share with you that, yes, this Saturday is our priority registration for residents. So that's on Saturday, March 3rd. It's typically the first Saturday of March, and that's for our residents at the Hart Park House at 9 o'clock AM. And then Friday, May 25th, is the pasta fee dinner. So that's a nice event as well. So we do allow the early check-in that evening, and that's also assisted by our committee and our Civic Club members. From 5:30 PM to 7 o'clock PM, individuals can come and pick up their numbers and what have you. We have souvenirs set out as well, if they want to purchase any items, and then they get to enjoy, enjoy a nice carb-loaded meal prior to race day the next morning. And then, of course, it's race day. So Saturday, May 26th, as usual, start-finish line is at Baldwin and Sierra Madre Boulevard. Early registration, again, is open as early as 6:00 AM, and the main race starts at 7:00 AM, followed by the Kids Fun Run. Some of our past attendants, we had 350 runners that registered and 348 that actually participated on race day. So with the Kids Fun Run, we had close to 200 youth. The total registered runners were 241 males and 107 female, and of those who were Sierra Madre runners were 67 males and 32 females. And we brought in slightly about 6,000 through all the, again, sponsorships and contributions from these individuals. Innovate Century 21 of Sierra Madre, Invictus Running Academy, and so on and so forth. So, again, we cannot do that without the sponsorships and donations of these, of these And then, most of you, or all of you council, should have gotten your, your letter. We have the third, July 3rd and July 4th festivities and parade. And once again, we're grateful that we have the Kensington as our title sponsor. So Tuesday, July 3rd, we start off with our wonderful activities, a dunk tank, Kids Fun Zone, followed by food trucks, the Beer Garden, nonprofit booths, live entertainment band, which I believe this year, again, is Groovy Lemon Pie, and then the Bubble Wrap fireworks. I think this year, our, our police chief has volunteered to be the first donkey.
Nice.
So, on the record. And then, I think last year, our city manager was the first one, so. And then Wednesday, July 4th, we start off with our 5K Fun Run, and of course, the parade, our community picnic over at Sierra Vista Park, and then we have our pool open for free rec swim, and then we also provide the free shuttle service as well. And then we also provide the free shuttle service as well that afternoon. Again, some information on the past attendance. So uh, the July third festivities kickoff um here at, at our Memorial Park and that's from five-thirty to ten-thirty P.M. The majority of that is set up by the committee um and/or uh city staff as well as with the, just the great assistance from our Public Works Department. And then when of course, we have PD and fire on hand um for any other assistance and uh that is needed. And then of course, July fourth, we begin at ten A.M. on the corner of Sierra Madre Boulevard and Sunnyside. Um, with last year having seventy-eight entries, which were two more than 2016. And then our total attendance was approximately twenty-five-hundred to thirty-five-hundred between both days, if not more. And thank you again to the volunteer support and sponsorships and donations combined of not just the committee um and um others, Sierra Madre Community Foundation, our staff, our, our commission as well. Um, and our staff again includes, you know, Public Works, PD, fire, um, just a lot of collaboration, so. Uh, and, and I don't think there's any event that I've seen thus far um in the eighteen months that I've been here, any programming that I haven't seen at least one of your faces on behalf of council. So we, our department is small, but we do a lot, so we, we really appreciate your, your support. And then we have our Family Movie Fridays. Um, that's always a fun program uh in the park. So those are alternating Fridays at the Memorial Park Bandshell. Um, those are at eight P.M. or sundown, so there were times that we maybe started a few minutes before, a few minutes after, just to make sure that, that the movie was, was enjoyable. And so these are the, the dates that we have, uh, the fifteenth, the twenty-ninth of June, and then we go into the thirteenth, the twenty-seventh of July. And then lastly, the tenth and the seventeenth of August. So uh, school is back in session on the thirteenth. So that seventeenth is the last Friday that we offer the movies. I didn't want to list the movies quite yet. Uh, uh, we are still finalizing uh the features. I can't tell you, Coco will be one of the features.
Of course.
And I'm excited because I haven't seen it. So many of the movies that were shown last year, I kind of enjoyed them while I was there working. But um, so it's nice to, to be bringing that one in. Um, last year's audience size ranged from a hundred and fifty to three hundred. And our sponsors again included our, our Firefighters Association. Uh, Say Memorial Foundation, Civic Club, just to name a few. There, there's, there's quite others. There was also a private um business that also contributed to one of our movie nights. And then of course, we have the um ever-popular summer concerts in the park. We keep getting emails and responses for different, from different bands for participation, but we're pretty much um almost there as well with the lineup. Again, um, didn't want to completely announce it yet, just, it will be surprised, but I wanted to make sure that we at least have the dates solidified for you. And so we start off with uh June twenty-fourth. Uh, we do have the Pasadena Community Orchestra, which is uh not typically featured as our, one of our lineups, but they come and do it. Um, they've done it for several years, so they're on on June ninth. And then our actual series starts off on the twenty-fourth and then followed by July first, uh, the eighth, the fifteenth, the twenty-second, the twenty-ninth, and then um August the fifth. So um many of those are um right alongside our, our movies, our Friday movies. So we have our Friday movie night and then we have our Sunday summer concerts in the park. Again, all at Memorial Park Bandshell from six to eight P.M. And uh, our audience size last year ranged between two hundred to five hundred. Uh, when us, our biggest shows was actually the last show last year, which was Cash Up Front. And they did all of Johnny Cash's music. They were really great performers. So they had a large crowd, a great way to end the season. And uh also, the Kensington, once again, will be returning this year as our title sponsor for the series. And then we have our Summer Fun in the Park. Um, and that's Wednesdays at Memorial Park. Uh, nine-thirty to ten-thirty A.M., just an hour. Um, but we do get quite an attendance uh from our local families. Or some of our stay-home moms that have their little ones. So that kicks off on June twentieth, um, up through the twenty-seventh and then in July, with July the fourth excluded. We do pick up on July eleventh and the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth, and then we go into August for the first and the eighth. Uh, and last year's attendance um reached up to forty-five youth uh on a weekly basis. Some of those youth were the little ones that traveled over from Bethany's, their summer camp program. So we um were able to develop some collaboration with them um so that they can notify us and we can uh be prepared in advance with staff to make sure we have enough hands on deck to um get out there with uh the youth. And then our activities included um CrossFit fundamentals, including just their warm-ups, fitness running, uh group exercises and learning about team spirit. And yes, um, bug fun, not big fun, but bug fun uh with our friendly San Gabriel Valley Vector Control. They did bring out some interesting insects last year, uh, including a tarantula spider. Of course, all the bugs were kept in their own little contained uh living spaces. And the um tarantula's name was um Oldy, I believe. She was a blonde tarantula. Very cute spider, by the way. Obviously, she was more scared of, of us than we were of her, but it was really interesting to see the youth be able to get up close and personal with um these bugs and the spiders and the insects. And some of them, they were able to actually touch and, and pet them, so that was interesting. But the kids really loved it, so. And then um that takes us all the way over to practically the um, the last quarter of the, the calendar year, so uh right back at Halloween happenings. Um, and that's October thirty-first, twenty eighteen. So um typically, the schedule is from three-thirty to five o'clock P.M. where they start with the trick-or-treating, downtown Sierra Madre businesses, uh, provide candy. And um followed by five P.M. uh with the costume parade. So that um starts off at Christine Court and follows up uh the Boulevard. With our fire department engine leading the parade and ending at Hermosa. Uh, which is here at our park. And then the costume parade is open to all ages without registration, but we do have waivers that are required and signed at Christine Court for the costume contest. And then five-thirty P.M. is the actual start of the costume contest um held here at the Bandshell. We do have four age categories plus one group. And then judges' participation and prizes are kindly also sponsored um by our very own Kiwanis. Past attendance last year, um, and I was conservative with the number, but five thousand plus overall attended downtown trick-or-treating, not including Allegra. And the numbers are actually provided by the communications um, um, emergency management team, so. So those numbers are, are valid. Um, we get a, all, their crew is out there all afternoon, all night, pretty much until eleven P.M., Chief, would you say? If not later, maybe earlier, but just um helping to, to watch and control the pedestrian traffic and, and street traffic for the street closures. But those are the numbers that we get. And the costume contest in itself, uh, we had about a hundred and fifty uh last year because it just the Dodgers just had to happen to have their World Series, so that impacted, I think, some of our attendance. But we still had nonetheless a good crowd to work with. And um again, some of the proceeds that we received, slightly under two thousand, just based on the, on the contributors that we have listed here. Saint Rita's all the way down. Uh, so we have, you know, not just our business community, we have our faith-based communities, um, other private organizations and our civic organizations that are also great contributors. And that's it. That's what I have for you. Um, thank you. You can please save those dates. And um again, thank you. We can't do it without your support and, and dedication um for our department.
Great. Thank you so much, Community Services Manager Rebecca. Do we have any questions for her at this time?
I have one. What are the ages for your Summer Fun in the Park?
Summer Fun in the Park are just school-age children, so I mean, they could be, I know last year we did receive ages three to five, so we don't have a tight age limit. Three-to-five-year-olds usually come with their parents and we invite the parents to participate. But we have gotten students as old as elementary school age, ten, eleven-year-olds um that actually come as well and, and also even help to volunteer with the, the setting up of the activities.
I put the dates in my phone.
Yes, come on out. You'd, you'd really enjoy it.
Yeah.
I just have a comment. I just think it's really impressive what you do with such little staff and have all these wonderful programs, but that's also a testament to our volunteers in town and all the organizations that, that help and, and really make these programs special. And this makes Sierra Madre a great town that it is. So again, just thank you for all your hard work. I mean, this is just really impressive.
Thank you, and I echo that because that's one thing I did learn when I, when I started here is um the events have their designated committees um that make up, you know, or en- enhance the, the, the team's support. So uh, I mean, with Fourth of July, there, that one alone has, you know, tons of, of sponsors that I couldn't even um list them all. Uh, but uh, it's just, it is awesome to see, you know, that all the different groups that are represented in, in the committees that come together um to work jointly with staff to make these events happen. Because after all, we do, we do work for the community, so it's a great asset for us to have.
I must say, I can't believe it's only been eighteen months since you've been in this position. That, when you said that, that blew me away. Special thanks also to our Community Services Commissioner. I know we have one of our commissioners here today, Ms. Sheridan, so thank you. Um, please extend our thank you to the rest of the commission. Um, any other questions that we may have this time? Okay, thank you, and I will open this up for public comment if anyone would like to comment on this item. Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda for discussion is our Police Department 2017 Public Safety Report, and I see Chief is walking up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, Madam City Attorney, and good evening, Gabe. This preparation or this presentation um is a summarized version of our annual report that we put on our website. So tomorrow morning, about ten o'clock in the morning, we'll have the seventeen-page, eighteen-page annual report that really expands on what the Police Department's done this year. I think I added it as an attachment uh to your package. So tonight's presentation is a summarized version uh of that. Uh, I will tell you that um we could not do this without you, without the residents in Sierra Madre, without our Neighborhood Watch block captains, without our people, our employees, our staff, folks like Rebecca, who helped keep this city going. Um, I can't tell you how proud I am of our department, how proud I am of our city and staff, our executive team, and how well we work together to keep this uh city going. I was um, I was watching Dr. Phil the other day. I'm a, I'm a doctor. He had two, he said two things that really resonated with me and I want to share tonight before I start the report. And he, one of the things he said was, you have to go through the past to be in the present, which just made sense. And secondly, he says, we have to change to stay the same. So those two quotes just resonated with me as I start the presentation because we really have come a long way. And, and I thank you. So there's my passionate slide that I usually put in on the um annual reports. It follows up, it gets up so much stronger than the one that ever fell. As our brothers and sisters next door at the Fire Department rebuild our department, um, we are very supportive of what they're going through. Um, and there's a bright light at the end of the tunnel. And uh as we work right next door, hand in hand, arm in arm with them, uh, we, all we do is shed that there's hope and we're gonna get there together. So uh that also resonated with me as we, as we rebuild our public safety across the board. Performance and accountability, um, we use uh different tools uh at the Police Department to make sure that we're efficient, uh, we're safe, and we're accountable. Uh, and lastly, that we're transparent in what it is we do. Folks now know the police officers, know the sergeants, know the police captain. Uh, on a first-name basis, not because they're being arrested or because they're being given a ticket or because they're being yelled at. It's because we are, we have become residents ourselves within the churches in the city, within the schools in the city, and within neighborhoods in our, in our city. So we are on a first-name basis, so they know us. Uh, and it really does help us do our job because we can't do it by ourselves. You'll see in a couple of slides uh that there's ten police officers, there's four police sergeants, there's four full-time police dispatchers, there's the captain and I. That's the full-time police department that you have. But in addition to that, we have part-time staff. We have volunteers, we have reserves. So in addition to the cadre of folks we have next door, we have our residents who help us problem-solve and who truly help us uh find solutions to the problems that we have. So we use things like the annual employee evaluations. Uh, folks get those each year. Uh, we have video and auto-recorders, video recorders in our cars, auto-recorders on our gun belts, uh, monthly training, uh, use-of-force-and-pursuits reviews, uh, when those are uh used. Uh, case clearances. Uh, the seven-hundred-and-forty-five cases, uh, we have a, a very good case clearance uh for two thousand and seventeen. And we looked at personal complaints and I know that um uh somebody had mentioned that we hadn't seen this uh on last year, the year before's annual report. You know, I gotta tell you, being transparent is one thing, but sharing your dirty laundry, like the personal complaints, is truly being transparent. There are people who don't like the contact. They don't like the uniform. They don't like the job. And they're in our lobby and uh the California Penal Code requires us to handle personal complaints accordingly. So we just can't say, yes, thank you for coming in, see you later, here's a sticker. It's nice to, you know, thank you. Uh, we have a certain process in place that we, we investigate personal complaints. Um, and we had eleven last year. And there's, there're different dispositions on how those particular complaints were handled. And I put a note in there, which I think is important. It should be noted that five of the eleven complaints uh were received from one individual. So we had a, a very unhappy camper that lived in town who just wasn't happy. So, and I think it's important. I mean, it's, it, it is what it is, and I think it's a good business practice to share uh the number of complaints because not everybody's happy. Staffing, I shared with you, um, the ten police officers, uh, well, nine police officers, one detective and the full, four full-time dispatchers. Uh, we currently have a officer cadet in academy. Uh, she's set to graduate March thirtieth from the Sheriff's Department. We're looking forward to that. We also have some part-time staff and reserve police officers. That's our current staffing now. Operational efficiencies. This is a big one uh because we're talking about accountability and we're making sure we're handling the calls for service and maintaining a safe environment for our residents. So you would think, just a little Sierra Madre, nothing happens. Well, we responded to fourteen-hundred and, almost fourteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred calls for service. That's from, all the way from a person with a gun to a person having a problem with a neighbor to someone stole my plant from my front yard. You know, we respond to all calls for service, whether it be twelve o'clock midnight or twelve o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, we actually documented those calls for service with almost seven-hundred-and-fifty police reports. Last year and the year before, you heard me talk about deploying the text to nine-one-one. Uh, that was big because we were a part of the, um, we were a plank city amongst eight other cities in the San Gabriel Valley uh that actually took off with the text to nine-one-one. Once other agencies in L.A. County, the Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, learned that there were small cities doing this, they all of a sudden became part of the um text to nine-one deployment and it took off. So it's been in, deployed for almost six months. Uh, we haven't had anything significant in our little city, but again, we're, we're on. As soon as a dispatcher logs on, we're monitoring any possible texts to nine-on-ones. Uh, priority calls and non-priority calls. We dropped our response time by a minute on each. That's huge. Uh, when we have two police officers and a sergeant in the field, uh, we can get to calls much faster. Uh, and that, those are the times that um I'm very proud of. Burglaries and theft from motor vehicles. There has been a question about, is crime up, is crime down? Um, if you remember, last year, uh, we had support and we presented uh the Take Back Our Community campaign. Uh, we utilized two thousand and sixteen statistics against two thousand and fifteen because we didn't have two thousand and seventeen statistics finalized. And so we did have crime. And so we did have crime spike in 2016. In 2017, you'll see that the statistics show that our residential burglaries and our vehicle burglaries, we dropped. Eighteen on the residential burglaries, six on the vehicle burglaries. From last year was thirty-five residential burglaries and eleven vehicle burglaries. But when you look at the commercial burglaries, we had eight this year versus two last year. And we started looking at the theft from motor vehicles, we had fourteen last year and we had eighteen this year. So there are still people out and about at nighttime stealing things that don't belong to them. But those are some statistics that you can look at as far as 2017 versus 2016. Traffic data, we had a large number of traffic stops. We have given eight hundred plus moving and equipment citations. And I want you to pay attention to the seventy-nine written and almost two thousand verbal warnings. You know, the, when we talk about traffic control, it has an ultimate goal when we're doing traffic enforcement of lowering traffic collisions. And we can do that three ways. We can do that with a verbal warning, we can do that with a written warning, or we can do that with a citation. The goal is to change the behavior so we lower our traffic collisions. This year, looking at 2017 data, we have increased our non-injury traffic collisions by forty-six percent, and our injury traffic collisions have increased twenty-four percent. So something is not working. Either we're not doing the right thing, or people just aren't paying attention. Most of the reasons that collisions occur on the roadways here in Sierra Madre are for two reasons. One is speed, and the other is stop sign violations. So those are the two primary reasons why our injury and non-injury traffic collisions occur on the highway. Traffic enforcement goes back to 2014. Either that slide looks a little blurry or I'm getting tired. But it goes back to 2014 and talks about the numbers of moving equipment, types of citations, parking citations, warnings, that includes verbal and written, and then the traffic activity totals, and that's a traffic stop. That's a traffic stop or a pedestrian stop. So the, you look in 2016, when we were shared duties with our folks in the tan and green, activity had dropped way low. But now that we're fully staffed, you look at 2017 figures, you can see they've come up. Again, motor vehicle collisions, we're comparing them to 2014, 2015, 2016, and then 2017. So they're up, they're up this year. Again, this city could not do without its volunteer force. We have been very fortunate as we continue to expand our police reserve program and our volunteer program. We were able to work a bunch of hours last year. The bottom line is, we saved close to forty-six thousand dollars for the city of Sierra Madre because we have dedicated loyal volunteers that work for us. So we're very proud of that. Again, I shared with you at the beginning of the presentation how important community outreach is. Again, we're just not the person giving you a ticket or taking you to jail or yelling at you. We are people that are visiting you, at church, at school, at work, down at Starbucks in neighborhoods, sharing our concern and vision, and it's working. Because the folks that we are arresting, the folks that are committing residential burglaries during the daytime and nighttime, we're being alerted to them by people who care. We, last year, two years ago, we sent out the magnet that said, "See something, say something." That's a true statement, and it really works. So without, without the community outreach and the impact we're having on our residents with the Neighborhood Watch, Cookies with the Cop, Coffee with the Cop, and Community Presentations, we couldn't do our job. So it's been a full-court press with the community outreach and the social media. It's interesting, the Facebook, our Facebook page that we deployed last year. People run, when something happens in the city, people run to Facebook, or they look at Facebook right away because they want an update. So it's real important, we try and keep people updated as quick as we can. Usually when there's a helicopter flying around, somebody wants to know, "Why is the helicopter flying around?" So we try and get that information out. And last year, I shared with you that we were in the process of developing the Nixle program, which is a reverse nine-one-one call where we can actually send out a message to different areas in the city, letting them know, "Hey, we've got a school lockdown, hey, we've got a bank lockdown, hey, we've got a containment going on staying in your house." It does work. I think we, we did a test run three or four months ago, and a lot of the phone calls came to City Hall. So we had to do some tweaking to make sure we're getting the phone calls, not City Hall. Giving back. This year was, was, was very interesting because not only did we participate in the Pink Patch Program, we, we were part of the No Shave November, and it was very interesting because a lot of us haven't had facial hair in a long time. So people had asked us, "What are you doing? Why are you doing this? Is this an East Coast thing that you guys are doing with the facial hair?" No, we're raising funds. I think we raised almost two thousand dollars with the No Shave November. We teamed up with the Fire Department, so it was, it was, it was nice to be able to give back. And it's, it's a good morale booster too because, you know, we, if you'll see Officer Cadzow, he's got a, the beard started to come down on his uniform, so he got, he grew some hair pretty quick, pretty quick. Accomplishments and goals for 2018. We've been busy. We've become fully staffed at the Police Department. Our social media presence is out there. Again, we talked about the deployment of the text to nine-one-one emergency platform. What we're looking for towards the future, you know, when folks come out of the academy, they just have a, a basic understanding of what it is to be a police officer. Now you talk about getting specialized training, DUI, DUI alcohol, DUI drugs, the training that's needed to affect an investigation, you know, domestic violence, all these types of skill sets. They just touch on them in the academies. When they come back out, we're sending them to more training to be familiar and understand how it really works. So we're, in addition to tactical skill set training, we're staying on top of our active shooter training, the mental health awareness, leadership and use of force. Those are things that we not only send our frontline officers to, but we're also sending our supervisors to. I have a new supervision team, which is also going to a two-week class, a basic supervisory school that they are required to attend, in addition to several one-day classes that we attend through Lieber Cassidy. So it really helps to educate our new supervisors and our new officers on really what it's about, wearing this uniform, maintaining, you know, risk management, and reducing liability. I think the last goal this year is to increase traffic enforcement measures needed to decrease overall collisions. So that's, that's us in a nutshell. Again, the annual report tomorrow morning, we posted on the PD's website, and it expands on budget numbers and a bunch of other things that the Police Department's been doing this year. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief, for that report. Very, I mean, if this is a summary, it's still very comprehensive. Do we have any questions for Chief at this point?
I have one. When it comes to the collisions, we're seeing that increase, do you think any of those are from people texting?
Yes, yes. We had an increase. It's interesting because we had an increase in written citations to people texting and talking on their cell phones. And we thought we would put a dent in things, but people continue, they, they take the citation, and they'll roll the dice, and they'll continue to text and also talk on their phones. And, yeah, it's, it's, it's become quite a challenge to manage. CHP shared their concerns. A lot of rear end, rear ends on the freeway are happening because people are texting.
Yeah, I, now that I'm commuting, you see everybody who's texting. It's unbelievable that they're doing it.
Any other questions for Chief Ortiz?
Go ahead.
Yeah, one quick question, piggybacking on the Mayor Pro Tem. You know, I want to take a little bit of heat off of you guys. I think that we gave you direction, maybe a year or two, year or two ago, to stop writing so many tickets, if I remember. So are you still, I guess, were you still holding back on enforcement to the extent that you would like because of council direction? And should we rethink that direction?
You know, it's, it's, the city manager and I had a long talk about traffic enforcement, where we're going with this. And, and I shared with them that, you know, being a former traffic guy, you know, writing twenty, thirty tickets a day, it does have an impact. But I think when you look at long-term, when you're trying to change behavior, if I stop you today and I give you a verbal warning on speed, or I give you a verbal warning on stop sign, I know, I know that it's going to have an impact on your driving behavior. But we do have the ability to look at our CAD system and look at our record management system and dispatch and find out, well, did I already give you a warning?
Yeah.
On the same, on the same violation. So we're going again, I think we're being reasonable in how we're doing enforcement, but I think we've got to come up with some different strategies to figure out how to get people's attention.
So you do, you track the warnings then?
Yes, we do, yeah. The written warnings are tracked, yes. And you actually get, and people get upset because they, they don't know it's a written warning, but when they get the written warning and they're explained, this is a written warning documenting our contact, documenting the reason we stopped you, and that if you're stopped again, it may not be a written warning you get. So sometimes, ninety, ninety percent of the time, they get it. But again, there's, we're just trying to change behavior.
Right.
So we, we're going to find a different way to, to strategize to try and get our collisions down.
Any success with changing behavior with the U-turns?
Yes, well, we've made a lot of friends and got a lot of autographs with the U-turn enforcement. And it's a double-edged sword, the U-turn enforcement. One, one minute we'll have people calling because they want U-turn enforcement, and the next minute we have people saying, "I'm never coming back to Sierra Madre because you guys gave me a ticket." It really is a double-edged sword.
It is.
But when we're there in the area, we're stopping and we're making friends.
Any other questions?
I want to just get back to traffic enforcement and motor vehicle collisions. I mean, I, I, I know this before, we've discussed this in the past many times since I've been on the council, and that correlation between, you know, more enforcement activity and fewer accidents. But I'm, I'm really not convinced that that is making a difference from what I've seen. And so I, you know, I don't know. I just wanted to know your thoughts about what you plan to do differently to try to increase the number of conditions, because giving more tickets as opposed to warnings is going to help. Maybe more activity altogether, more, you know, more stops? I mean, what's the answer?
So in 2005, Berkeley did a study, and they came up, they came up with what was called the Traffic Index Number. I don't know if you remember that number, that term. But what the Traffic Index Number was, was they took a number of traffic collisions, and they compared it to the number of traffic citations that were issued. And so more traffic citations are issued, they expected, and it was proven that the lower, there was a lower number of traffic collisions that occurred. And the less number of traffic citations are issued, the higher number of traffic collisions occurred. So that, that was kind of the law for about five years. And then Berkeley did another study and determined that wasn't true because there were different, there were different reasons why traffic collisions were occurring.
Yeah.
So what I'm looking to, towards is, working with Chris Semino. He's doing a kind of a traffic survey of our downtown area, the crosswalks, figuring out where we have a high number of pedestrians. We're utilizing radar counters throughout the city. And we're trying to figure out where's the best spot right now as far as speed enforcement's concerned, stop sign enforcement's concerned, pedestrian enforcement's concerned, and then we'll come up with a game plan, and we'll do saturation patrols. Our part-time officers will help us with the saturation patrols, not only with the traffic enforcement, but also with the burglary. So it's just putting together a plan and doing saturation enforcement, getting people's attention and mass numbers. And I think that, that, that should have some impact.
Just one more comment on the U-turns downtown. Because I, I'm not sure that people see the sign, even though it's quite obvious. And they seem to me to be good signs that if you make a left turn into the parking, that's a violation. Should we be painting something on the streets perhaps to make it more visible? Would that help, you know?
I know our residents know that no U-turn signs are there. And I'm, and I'm being honest, that most of the folks that come into town, they don't, they don't see the signs, and they don't understand the signs.
But we want people from outside to come here and spend money, you know?
I can, I can work with Chris Semino on that and figure out, sit down with maybe, talk to a traffic engineer and find out if in fact, you know, arrows or signage on the roadway will help us get the message out.
Yeah. I, I do want to comment though.
Yeah, I do as well.
I think you're just doing a great job, and, you know, I mean, I can see the difference in our, I believe, our community policing and the attitudes. I don't get calls for complaints anymore. And I really want to give you credit, Chief, because I think it's the leadership at the top that sets the tone of how the department is going to be run. And again, it's, it's just, I feel really, really good about this and feel like we made the right decision to keep our Police Department, even though, yes, it's, it's not cheap. But I think our, our residents value what you're providing here, especially, you know, little things. You talk about the response times. I mean, the incredibly low response time, not for the priority calls, but for the non-priority calls. In other cities, you don't even get a response if it's not a priority call. And I think we probably get, you probably get more calls just because people know that you're going to respond. How many people in other cities, it's like, "Why even bother calling the police? There's no point. Nobody got murdered. It's, there's no point in calling." So I really think this is what ma, again, what makes Sierra Madre the great place to live and, you know, why our property values are going through the roof, because this is a really desirable place. And you're doing a big part in keeping it that way. So thank you very much.
I would just like to say, Councilmember Goss and I were talking right before the meeting, and, you know, the difference of a year and a half ago to today is just remarkable. And that is to your leadership, and it's to your entire staff pulling together and the community. And we are a safe community. And I see, you know, you guys down at Kirsten Court all the time. People are engaging and talking to you, and so the morale, I can see the morale in your department as well. So thank you so much, and thank all of your staff for all the good work you do.
I'd just like to add to that. The morale is not just good, it's great. And comments I get from people are always positive. I might have had one complaint in the last year. And I'm thinking about two years ago, when we, it was nip and tuck, we didn't know if we were going to have a Police Department or not. And we, this council pulled together and supported that department, and you stepped to the fore as the leader and got the job done. So I echo Councilmember Capoche's statement. I give you credit for your leadership, and I think we're very lucky to have you. And we have a fully-staffed Police Department, I'm sure. I know there are some really top-quality people have been hired.
Yeah.
We've met most of them, and so I'm just, it's all good. Just keep up the good work.
Yeah, and I'll echo all that, and just add that, you know, I really think that we have a department here that exemplifies and practices community policing. And you hear a lot of cities talk about it, and a lot of departments talk about it, but you don't see a lot of them practice it. And I think you, Chief, you know, should be credited, not only with rebuilding this department and really from a year and a half ago, you know, really saving it, but, but really instilling this, this sense of community and the personal touch, you know, the few times that I hear from folks that have dealt with the Police Department. It's, the stories are always a personal story and how the police officers, and even you, just, I mean, to have a police chief going out and responding to calls and following up with residents on calls, that's what you want, right? And, you know, I still believe that, you know, police officers are heroes. And I, I think that it's, in a time like this, our society, that gets lost. And a lot of folks in a lot of different cities don't view that the same way anymore, and it's sad. And I think here, in this city, really, we still have heroes, right? And I think that what we're doing is great. And on a small note, I know that Cookies with the Cops extremely, extremely popular with the kids. You know, I've heard, no, I seriously, I mean, I think you've, you're doing them at all the schools, but I hear that's just phenomenal. You know, the kids love the Cookies, but they love the, to get into the car and, you know. No one was doing that when I was a kid. I don't know, you know, it would have been awesome to have Cookies with the Cop, but, yeah, congrats.
Can Councilmember Harabedian have Cookies with the Cop?
I, you know.
I ride in the car one day.
That's, that's half the fun, you know?
Give them the sticker badge.
If you have a little sticker and sit in the car.
Whatever, whatever it's costing, it's definitely paying off, so.
Well, Chief, I don't even think I can articulate anything else better than what you've already heard here. I, I am still amazed that you quoted Dr. Phil to begin with, but I think it says something. What we have gone through in the last two years, the last year, and seeing, being able to see how to get to this point B today, I think was almost unheard of a year ago, even though we had faith. But it was a very turbulent time. And also to say about the, the customer service, if there is anything you hear about our Police Department, not just about the statistics and the numbers, but really is how people know their names and how there is a relationship that's built. Sergeant Bailey is, is someone that I know. And in the short period of time that he's been here, he is just amazed at how much the businesses and residents look so favorably upon the officers here. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for hanging in there. I know it was a challenge, but we salute you for being able to take that role and taking us through that turbulent time.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have a request.
Yes.
I would like to get information. I know you have the fifteen, sixteen information on burglaries and theft, but I would just like to get that information in comparison.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. Public comments on the side? Public comments on this item before we move into our last item?
D. Alcorn on Grand View. I just, I've been a police volunteer for several years now, so I have a little bit different perspective than some folks. I want to have to say, I'm, I'm really impressed with this man. He's, well, there's the difference between what was before and what is now. We have a really functional, one of the things from my viewpoint, we have a very functional volunteer operation. A lot of resources that are there now to make our job right. The attitude is there to make us be able to do our job in a proper fashion, and there's a lot of motivation for us to, to participate with that man. And I say, and, and with the other, with the others too, like the captain. And just, that's, they're just, just amazing bunch of people to, to do. I'm just, I'm just a volunteer, do my thing, but it's making such a, it is a big difference. And I just want to say thank you very much. Another thing, it's interesting, they talk about the response time, we've got two or three minutes like that. I had a person talk to me, and they were in Mount Washington, and they said, "Well, what did you call them? Was it a, did a big accident? Was there a gun or something?" "No." "Well, why did they show up?" "Really, I'm serious." But they said, "No, don't even bother to call because they won't come." They don't, for a day later. It has to be a major thing, like somebody getting shot or killed or something like that, before they even respond, and even that takes hours. So I just, it is incredible, you know, what we have here, and just the response and, and the whole atmosphere with the community, and with the people that work more directly with the chief here. I just want to say, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, beside, no, no, I'll tell the truth.
Anyone else want to comment on this? Mr. Hood.
Gary Hood, North Baldwin. And I think the police chief has done a terrific job. I was really proud to see the council select Chief Ortiz to be the leader of our community. I called, I've called on him a couple of times, and just about a week ago, I had a concern for a neighbor. I called him, maybe two and a half hours later, he called up and said, "Yeah, they checked on the neighbor and everything was fine." And I, I just appreciate the leadership that the council has shown in picking Chief Ortiz to be our leader in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a correction, our, our city manager made that decision. The council does not make that decision.
I knew that.
But we supported it.
Definitely supported it.
Okay. Let us move to our next item on the agenda, and our last, and I believe we have Mr. City Manager that will be presenting on the fiscal impact analysis of Measure D.
Thanks, Mayor. So maybe unfortunate timing, did I go after two of our Keystone Departments. We started the meeting talking about, when we went through the general plan update, that the, the primary principle was to maintain Sierra Madre's character, and Rebecca and Chief Ortiz are a really big reason that Sierra Madre is the way that it is. So having said that, coming into the April 2018 election, we have two measures on the ballot. Measure A is an advisory measure to Measure D, our companion measure. It's non-binding, and council put this on the ballot, and stating should Measure D pass, the reductions council would have to make. So based on that measure and the Measure D, which is a complete repeal of the UUT, twenty-four percent of all general funds, two-point-six million dollars, we completed a fiscal impact analysis for what operations of the city would look like should Measure D pass. So as you can see, for our revenue in the general fund, our largest revenue source is property taxes at fifty-five percent. Our second-largest revenue fund is the UUT, again, a quarter out of every dollar in revenue we collect comes from the UUT. Sales tax, that is rounded up, just for people viewing at home, it's actually about two-point-seven percent, and all other sources combined, again, about twenty-one percent of our entire revenue stream. So the UUT is essential and critical to the operation of our general fund departments. Looking at this in two other ways, now that we know that the UUT is a quarter of our budget, on the left you have a chart showing general fund expenditures by department. Police with Chief Ortiz, who was just presenting, is our largest general fund source of expenditure at three-point-six million dollars, or thirty-three percent of the general fund, followed by fire at eighteen percent, and library at seven percent. So if we put those three together, that's nearly sixty cents out of every dollar we spend from the general fund goes to public safety or the library. So the proposed reductions that we would bring to council for their consideration, should the Measure D pass and the UUT be repealed? And for any employees that are watching, we want to say these are the step we have to take to talk about what would happen should the UUT repeal be voted in. So out of the ten officers, we would have to lay off six. We'd have to lay off four sergeants, and we would attempt to outsource our dispatch. That's an estimated savings. Obviously, we'd also have to have a partner, and we can't guarantee that someone would take on our dispatch. This would reduce our total patrols by about sixty percent, and the response times that we all just talked about, two and a half minutes for a hot call, three and a half minutes for a regular call, would certainly go up. We'd only have one officer patrolling at all times as opposed to three that we have right now, which means some, some calls may go unanswered. What people don't talk about when you talk about reductions is there's always corresponding revenue that's associated with the departments. So one grant we get is called a public safety augmentation grant. It's a hundred thousand dollars. It cannot replace funding or plug in for reduced funding. The assumption is today we would lose that enforcement. This is everything we do from parking to the overnight passes to all citations, is a little over two-hundred thousand a year. If we had four officers, parking is not going to be a primary concern, as speeding will not be, so we have to make an assumption that the enforcement revenue will go away. So after everything we've done to police, what we can expect in savings under this scenario is one million dollars. Proposed reduction for the fire department is to eliminate the paramedic unit. Currently, our response times in fire, paramedic are about three and a half minutes, a little bit, that's actually the median, it's a little bit less. For in-town, as you know, we respond up to the flats as well, which is, increases our response time. Under this scenario, laying off all of our paramedic personnel would save about four-hundred thousand dollars. However, we'd also lose the revenue that's associated with paramedic billing, which is about three-hundred thousand dollars. We would attempt to outsource the service, likely, it's likely response times for paramedic would increase dramatically. I believe the county standard is, paramedic unit has to arrive within seven minutes and fifty-nine seconds. And again, right now, our response time is three and a half minutes. So after eliminating our paramedic service, we would save just under a hundred thousand dollars. Library reductions, this would take our services to one day a week. We would then, at the next election, we would ask the voters to close the library in its entirety. It's under state law, you can't actually close an operating library without a vote of the people. So we could save by going to one day a week, limiting access, eliminating all of our programs, and access to the archives. We would save about six-hundred-twenty-five thousand in expenditures. However, similar to the other departments, we could assume that the donations, items from the foundation and friends of the library likely would not come pouring in to a one-day-a-week operation, bringing our expected expenditure savings to four-hundred thousand dollars. And then Rebecca's Department, Community Services, it's amazing how much they do with such a limited amount of resources already. Just over the summer, they reached about twelve thousand people, eliminating that entire department, all of the events they do would save about two-hundred thousand dollars. We, of course, would forego the revenue that we bring in, so our grand total in savings after eliminating the department would be a hundred thirty-six thousand. So when we get through all the reductions, we've identified after what we talked about with police, reducing patrols by sixty percent, eliminating paramedics, eliminating community services, and moving the library to one day a week, we still have to find an additional nine-hundred and nine thousand dollars in unidentified cuts. And the plan at this point would be to have every general fund department take a twenty percent across-the-board reduction to make that up. We haven't done a corresponding revenue analysis, and we haven't done an analysis on what, what that would likely do to state mandates that we're under, but we would pretty immediately have to identify the additional nine-hundred and nine thousand dollars. So with that said, we'll take any questions that council may have.
Thank you, City Manager, for that presentation, as dire as it was. I know we needed to see that information. Do we have any questions with that presentation?
Does Measure D stand for doomsday or disaster?
Yeah, that's a good question. It does not. So I have a question, I guess, for the city attorney. First of all, thank you for that presentation. I thought the report was, was really excellent, and the fact that you, a big catch, if you will, was this corresponding revenue issue that in the previous analyses, we, we never really considered. So I think that it was an eye-opening, eye-opening addition, and I think that really the only, the conclusion and the only thing that I could see the city doing is, if this passes, is disincorporating. And I think that sounds dramatic, and, you know, people probably are arguing, oh, you know, it's hyperbole, but I really don't see how else we would be able to save the money. So God forbid that would happen, but if we did have to disincorporate, to the city attorney, what, how, how does that process work?
Well, you would, you would need to go through a lavco proceeding, and I've never participated in disincorporating a city before. It's not something that I really wanted to add to my twenty-five, twenty-six years of municipal experience, but I am happy to bring a memo to council for the next council meeting, so that everyone could see how that would, how that, how that would happen.
I, I think that would be helpful, now, again.
That would, I could share that. I would make that a publicly disclosable legal memo, if that's the will of the council.
Right. I think that would be helpful.
I would just be interested to even understand what the process is, and, and again, we don't know if it would come to that point, but given what was presented today, I don't even know what other options that we would have.
And in that, I mean, how would we deal with the ongoing PERS obligations that we have? That doesn't go away, even if we...
It, it does not go away. PERS has a special fund that, and hopefully, it's not going to have more and more participants over time, but they do have a special pool that agencies that are unable, through bankruptcy or otherwise, to, it's usually through bankruptcy, disincorporation, to pay their, their PERS premiums goes into that fund, and I don't have a lot of experience with happen, with what happens to the members and participants when that occurs.
Just a question about that, because, you know, it just seems to me, I agree with Councilmember Harabedian, that that would be the logical outcome, is disincorporation, because even filing for bankruptcy, I mean, our city isn't like the ones that have. I mean, we don't have a lot of debt that can be restructured, or a lot of contracts that we can get out of, and so far, my understanding is, in the few cities that have filed for bankruptcy, they've been, the courts have been extremely reluctant to restructure the pensions.
That's correct.
So, yeah, so we're still most likely stuck with the pensions, and so what would be the point of even declaring bankruptcy? That's not going to bail us out.
I, I agree. Bankruptcy would not eliminate the city's obligations to PERS.
Just to add on to that point, even bankruptcy would be intended for debt or other obligations. This would actually be a forward operating issue, so even if you could discharge all of your debts, a complete repeal of the UUT wouldn't leave enough money to operate services of the city regardless of debt.
Yeah.
And then in incorporation, it would be the county that would end up taking over?
Yeah, you'd become unincorporated county.
Wow, why do we have this as the last item?
I know, and I do, I do think that sometimes, you know, as these comes, things come up, there's always out in the community, oh, they're just trying to scare us. This isn't really a scare tactic, this is actually the truth. If we have a complete repeal of the UUT, we will no longer be able to operate as a city. And that, that needs to get out, and I just think the residents need to spread that word as much as we can.
I mean, if we're scared, we, we all are scared, because we live in this town, you know? And that's a pretty scary thought, what would happen if this passed.
Totally unacceptable, totally unacceptable, period. For my money, the, everything we're talking about here is, it's almost like a fairy tale in as much as it's reasonable people with a sensible and a reasonable understanding of the way things work would not, I think, would look at us talking about bankruptcy or this corporation, they go, "What, what are they talking about?" So it's real. This is a real threat. It's a very real threat, and I hope that everyone watching at home here realizes that.
You know, and I don't want to minimize it. I think about two years ago, you have seventy-two percent of the voters wanting to stay at the ten percent. I can't imagine that we'd go in this direction, but it really was an education piece, and to not underestimate that value of education and making sure that residents know what the impact really would be on this, so. Okay, would anyone like to comment on this item?
Because it's such a cheery item.
Okay, seeing none. Maybe we should have ended with Chief Ortiz's.
I know, really.
Presentation, it was such a nice high and positive.
Can we just redo it?
So that is the last item on our agenda for tonight. I do want to ask if my colleagues here have any new items for future agenda? Discussions, okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Shall we move?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, and it passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.